Yeah, I think I got all the CIP.
My printer decided to take a vacation.
Was that what it was?
Definitely come back in a while.
For rest days till.
Oh, wait. These cartridges.
Four ladies running around.
Then I call someone who's not speaking.
Yes.
And trying to explain.
I remember last time someone said, oh, never.
It's one of my research.
You're asking.
Yeah. Round and round and round.
That and messy.
Yeah.
You brought me one of those, right?
Especially since it's still like.
King Richard.
Which wasn't dropping the pages. Driving.
Any else?
For this big thing.
Yeah.
So back on the phone. I'm just personally doing this.
Being all excited.
Let's try it again. Well, I'll just mark it as lost. Right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
What's Bailey's name?
I thought John.
John, John is here.
Yeah, John's here.
He was here.
He was here.
His stuff is still there. Is that all right? Did he walk away? No?
Still have six, so we still have six.
Wasn't that bad?
I have six. We have a quorum.
I think he thought we're done. No.
Maybe he thought he was done.
I think so.
Yeah.
He might have. In that case, he is done.
I don't know.
Well, okay. I've got a roll after three, so I'll call the meeting to order. Ask stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got red lights coming on now. So if you guys are turning your lights on.
Oh, yeah. Should I turn on John's?
So I'll do a roll call.
Drop out.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Rebecca.
Here.
Mark Walters excused. Alan.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Lois.
Here.
Mel. And John. Where is Jim? Okay, you have a quorum.
Ask for motion to approve the agenda.
Over.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Additional items for the agenda or any clarifications? And hearing now, ask for vote on the approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any days? Anybody have a conflict of interest with anything on today's meeting schedule? There are no declared conflicts. We'll move on to the public comment. Anyone wish to make public comments at this time? Public comment, staff comment.
I think most of our comments will be on the agenda.
Consideration of the minutes from the February 5th meeting. I do have a correction on item three B.
Three what?
Three B.
Okay.
Baker. Remove carpenter. Old settlers park committee chair recommended himself, black and.
All right, so many different names. Okay. Got it.
So did we get the Miles Kimberly Park name changed at the top line on under A?
Excuse me?
Well, it says Kimberly.
No, it says Kim Merly, so.
Right, no, it does.
B is one.
Okay.
Well, we'll correct that. That's why, that's why they're called tentative, not final. It. I have Kimberly everywhere is.
Well, yeah.
What is it called?
Kimberly, you know, B.
It's correct other places.
K I M M E R L Y, right?
Right.
Where did I put the? Okay, up. Where's the name, man? That's it. Under A, I have Miles Kimberly.
I've got Miles Kim Merly. So somewhere it was corrected as.
Oh, okay.
Well, mine, I have Kim Merly. So anyway, okay, we'll check it.
Maybe we caught the spelling error under number four parks and rec coordinator and caretaker.
Excuse me?
Under four.
Okay.
Coordinator and caretaker. How is it meant caretaker?
It's not caretaker. Oh, it is. Yeah. With my copy says caretaker.
Sorry, guys, I'm.
That's what it was called before. You know, this, that one, I'll make sure that I have it listed right. But when we were talking about the bylaws, that's what it started the whole review that you wanted to make sure that we took a look at it to look at section 6.6, which was called parks coordinator caretaker. You want us to look at it. That's how wild listed it in that way. Now, you're, there's a recommendation to change that when we go through the bylaws.
Correct. Okay. To the county facilities director.
Yeah, okay. 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 Okay.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the.
As, as amended.
As amended, never a third amendment, as amended.
Okay.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Stop talking about things that have already been corrected.
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have minutes. Well, unfinished business. Moving on to discussion action item one administrator updates. A bylaws approved amendments.
Okay. In your packet. First of all, the executive committee reviewed these at a meeting since the draft minutes at what, a couple of weeks ago? And so what you have here is a revision with their input and recommendation to you. There was one other change in there that I made afterwards when getting this finalized. Anything that is grammatical, grammatical is probably spelt wrong too because I said. And then as grammatical, you won't see that correction in here. I just made the correction. So anything that that's here, you see. Under the first page, we updated, you know, to add the word county administrator, things such as that. Under the minutes, I know we had a question about draft minutes. And I checked with the county clerk. They use it as tentative. And once like now that you've approved the minutes, tentative comes off and it'll be finally on, on our, the website as final or however, that's it. So I just follow what they do, you know, for, for, for the commission. So that's all that, that is. On the next page, there was a question about general plan. I think I had the question and it is, it's out of the county's planning department and it's called the Leonel general plan. So I just put it in there that way. Started, took out the word basic. It's the Leonel, that's what it's called. So I just put it in there that, that way. Uh, there's nothing else left on that page to get under. Yeah, okay, on the next one under, where were we at here on three? Conflict of interest. You had this whole paragraph of stuff as related to conflict of interest. Well, the county has a conflict of interest policy that has to be followed. There's no question about it. So instead of having all this in there, we're going to put it in here and or compatible of office Esper County Policy 2.0, which will be attached to these bylaws. That way, if the policy changes, the bylaws change. I mean, so you, you're just doing it that way instead of having to have it all written here. At least, you know, we did that. Also underneath there, but I did leave the last paragraph that, you know, if you believe you have a conflict, you can check with your fellow members. If they don't think you have one, then you can proceed. You know, and the same thing for staff. Like if I were to come in here and want to recommend something, but I'm a partner in that business, then I've got to say something to you. And if, and if you think it's a conflict, then I got to withdraw. That's for staff. But because I took the word staff out of the next sentence simply because staff doesn't vote on anything. So I just took the word out, so and just did that way. Under the public notice, we wanted to make sure that not only does the, does it show up in newspapers and general circulation, it also shows up on our, our website. When we get to section 4.4, again, minutes, use the word tentative. I changed to ask that the attentive minutes shall be available for public inspection not more than eight business days. We didn't have, how many days? You count weekends, just eight business days? And also the final minutes, approved minutes shall be available for public inspection not later than seven business days. Usually it's, it's more than enough time, but unless there are some major changes, it shouldn't be, that's not an issue. So that's all it did. Next came, when we got down to section 6C, that's where we made the major changes. You know, we now have a county, uh, county facilities director. So everything that said caretaker, whatever, now is county's facilities director. Again, other words, you know, there are other words that were taken out. Also another thing, under the secretary's duties, we took out some things that staff is doing because I wanted the secretary to stick around because the secretary is not being paid to do all this, is volunteer. And the secretary talked with it, so we tried to keep it down to a minimum. One thing that we do appreciate is reviewing the minutes. And you know, anything that the county administrator's office has to do to record and transmit all minutes, we take care of that, but if you see something that's wrong, the secretary will let, let us know. So we try to eliminate what the secretary doesn't need to do. That's staff's responsibility and, you know, to take it from there. So we take, uh, we also took out under the executive committee, they don't need to re, they don't need to meet to review the monthly meeting minutes. You do that here. That way we're not forcing them to meet every month because you're meeting on an as needed basis or when they're really the administrator, like I did earlier in the month. I wanted to have this conversation to make sure I wouldn't overstep in something in, in order to bring to you. County facilitators, you see all that's in there. We also laid out how this works. You know, the county facilities director, you know, is, is responsible for everything with the Parks and Rec Commission except for daily maintenance. I don't think you want to know every time that, that the porta johns are cleaned out. You know, but anything like with that. But they also then is sent on to the county administrator. Anything that you come up with, uh, this, these meetings, it may have to go to the county administrator and/or the board of commissioners for final approval. Your recommendation body, a very important recommendation body. So that's how, how we take that forward. Down at the bottom, yes, this is where we made some changes and I hope it's okay. We wanted to make it clear that commission budget and appropriations. Again, you don't make the budget. You make a recommendations to the budget. The county board does the budget. We also are doing all expenditures in accordance with the county's budget rules that are get adopted every year, which you've seen copies of, you know, so we try to work with that. And we also looked at the gifts and grants accepted. Charles, your script that you did last week was great because we'll be able to use that for the future. So we'll put all, you know, we have that. And, but we don't have these special places where it is. It's just not there, you know? But if it's accepted as a grant or if we accept it as a gift, it can only be used for that purpose anyway. And so that's what we're going to, that's what, what we're making clear. But we don't create special non-revenue Parks and Rec Commission fund. We don't have any of that. It's all here, it's general, but it is held for certain reasons. So I did work with Kath, Kathy on this whole section to make sure we got it to how it actually works. We also changed it from the county clerk to the finance director. You know, the, to, to the finance director because that's changed. And we also wanted to make sure that by the board of commissioners is assigned by its chair if necessary. So everything works because the county board makes the final decision. Your recommendation plays into it, but they make the final decisions. Last but not least, we did it half of that. Of course, all bylaws have to be amended by the county board. So I think I've covered everything that brings everything that was written in 2017 up to date today. You know, so, but it's kind of where we are. And what will happen is if you approve this, it'll be on the commission's agenda next month. I'll even come back up here to explain it so I don't leave it to somebody else. And Alan, I won't even charge you for it. That way I could really have fun.
I gotta buy a coffee again?
Yeah, you're gonna have to buy me more coffee. But no, we'll do it that way. And because if you approve it, then I'm going to put it in together just like this in an EDS. Have it ready, but I'll be, I'll be willing to be up here in case they have a question, so. It all makes sense that I cover everything. But thank you for the opportunity to do that. But I hopefully it streams light a little bit.
I think it's streamed out a bunch.
Yeah.
Cover the confusion.
Yeah. And it's what it was, what we were trying to do is get rid of the confusion, so. And I did have Lauren looked at it and I know Patrick looked at it to make sure we're, you know, make sure we're adjusting that way.
At this point, I'll ask for a motion that we approve the revised.
Oh, well, recommend approval of the bylaws.
That we approve the, the changes and that we then recommend approval by the board of commissioners.
Correct. That's good. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It has to be two different things, but.
Yeah.
That would be the motion if someone wanted to make it.
I would, I would agree with your suggestion for the motion. You already changed that.
We're, we're recommending to the board of commissioners.
Well, no, you're recommending changes to the, approving the recommendation to the bylaws and furthermore, recommending that the county board of commissioners adopt these changes, these amendments.
Support.
Motion.
Does that make sense to you? Of course, I'll write it up later on the way I like it, so there you go. Lo, did you make the motion, Lois?
I did.
Okay.
Lois made a key seconded.
Great.
And I apologize, I should have written that motion up sooner, but that's basically, I'm saying that you've approved these recommended changes and you're, and you're furthermore, you're recommending that the board, that it be forwarded to the board of commissioners for their adoption. Or their approval, so.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have, we have updated bylaws.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Do you want any interest? You want me to just roll down the list, sir?
Well, I mean, when I, when I was looking, when I was watching the board of commissioners meeting from last month and everybody was putting through their letters of intent for 2% grant funding, I didn't realize that was a requirement that we do that. And I was already behind the ball getting that done. So in last night's board of commissioners meeting, we included as a late addition that we were submitting a letter of intent to put a 2% grant funding in for the disc golf. Try, we're going to try again.
Yeah.
But that's up to us to decide whether in fact we want to try again. We don't have to submit the application if we decide not to.
Yeah. But correct. And we'll just up, we'll update if you want to proceed. So the commission did approve your intent. Uh, we need to finish it, but I think Lauren, you've got the entire application, right?
Well, I've got the old one here and I've got some markups because, well, one of the copy I have has some problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, so any amendments or edits? I sent you an email with the timeline. Needs to be on the meeting by April 30th. It'll be on May, I judge that for a few.
It's just the one that I printed out. A lot of the words in the paragraphs extend beyond the paragraph on the page and they're not there. So I don't know actually what it says.
That's the problem with their form. If it's more than one line and you keep going without, it shouldn't be going to the second line. You have to expand it all and I would recommend writing the narrative in a separate document and attaching it to the back.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I think I can scan this in optical reading.
Charles, I would also recommend that maybe you may want to think about doing a slight modest increase in the cost simply just because, I don't know what inflation is.
Inflation over three and a half percent increase.
Yeah, whatever. I don't know about 10, but okay. So, but the board did approve your intent, so.
So I guess at this point, I'm really looking for a motion that we ask, we will resubmit the 2% application to the tribe for 2% funding. One more, we'll go, give it one more, no.
It, it, does it make sense to just wait until we get the application for us and then approve? Because we don't have the application in front of us, right?
Correct, you don't at this point.
Right. And I, I don't know. We have a procedure that requires an intent.
Well, you did that last night.
Yeah.
Well, the county board did, yeah.
Yeah, well, we approved, we approved their, the intent. Now we're moved, he's asking for authorization to move forward in preparing the grant or preparing the application.
Okay, this group never affirmed the, the le, the letter of intent.
I got you. I, I, I would move that we affirm the, the effort to resubmit a grant for the disc golf project at, at Miles Kimberly Park. Through 2%.
And support from Tim.
Mr. Cleanup out there.
As part of discussion, I will say that it's possible that a passport grant, I think this project might qualify for a passport grant. Ask Patrick to probably look that up if we don't get the 2%. That'll be our next thing.
Funding options, we can explore all of them, yeah.
Anyway. So any, just any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll ask for a vote on the motion and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
How will this come back to us in its official form?
Uh, let's see, it has, it's due by the end of April to the, to the tribe, I believe.
What's it?
Applications to administration by April 30th so they can be presented to the board of commissioners at the meeting.
So if you want to have this prepared and have it ready by your.
Next meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Point, April agenda. Okay. All right.
Moving on, DTE relief Michigan program.
Okay. As you, well, you're, everyone already knows. Public hearing was held last night. There was a whopping crowd in here of two that's, what are you laughing about over there?
DTE relief program, not, not the.
Oh, my mistake. Anyway, we had, well, basically we had a conference call yesterday on a Zoom call. And our next step is in the, I never got a name. I left all my notes in the other room. But anyway, went through all the steps that we're going to have to go through in order to get this done. What we're going to do, just be back on your agenda in April if you want to consider it further. But Patrick and the, the coordinator for the project that they'll be using are going to meet next week to go through everything to see what's there and not there. Patrick will be coming back with you next month with a recommendation of whether you should proceed or not. The biggest question I think that's out there is the watering. I, I think.
We've already looked into some of that stuff. This is, this is Jordan Kiesel. He, he's.
Well, you want to just come up here.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. About to stay up here, you're going to be talking a lot anyway.
So we just did a quick pass at some of the things that came up during the meeting. And I, I spoke with, with Ellie. We got a good plan for, for how we want. I'm going to meet with her Monday afternoon and then address some of these things. I don't think watering is going to be a problem, so there's, there's lots of water sources out there. There's, there's two wells, right? Two wells or just two bunks?
We have two bunks.
Okay. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. And so I don't have everything for you right now, but after I speak with Ellie, I think I'll have a lot more details.
The report and stuff, but we are moving.
The only other issue was they're looking, we'll be looking for 30 to 35 volunteers on planting day.
I think that's a requirement too. You have to have at least 30 or something.
30, yeah. And more would be better.
Yeah.
But the minimum is like 30 to 35.
I believe they require, that's someone's whole job is to coordinate all the volunteers.
Yeah, they need a volunteer, they need a volunteer coordinator that, you know, can at least get out there. But they're, they will do a lot of work in helping to promote and try to find the volunteers. And especially if we have it on a Saturday and they gave us two Saturdays, May 10th and May the 17th. So you, we're going to do that. We got to pick one like May 17th, which is you get our name in early until we tell we can't or something, so. That way you make sure your volunteers show up, so.
How many trees are we looking at?
About 20.
And could vary in size. Yeah. I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of the. It seems like a lot of work for 20 trees. I'm kind of the mass treater kind of guy as in I kind of don't have a plan on trees. I'll plant 100 and get 60 and be pretty happy about it. But you can buy them for a little bit of nothing. But anyways, I'm, I'm not trying to.
The trees I'm talking about are one and a half to two inches.
Two inches is already in diameter, pretty good sized trees.
Seven, all right, yeah. Seven to 10 feet pine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, they're very specific type of trees, you know? They're not doing any pine or anything like that, so.
Okay. I, when I was talking to, I can't remember her name. We put together our grant, the, the trust fund grant.
Tiffany.
Tiffany, yeah, we're, and I'm not sure if you guys have places where you want to plant, but eventually it may come out of the, the trust fund. We'd like to roll some pines along the, along the road and try to separate that off a little bit. So just keep that in mind. But it sounds like these aren't conifers, so it's not going to make a lot of sense to.
Okay. So you'll be giving them an update next, after your meeting, so.
Yeah, I'm optimistic, but I'll, I'll wait until I have all of the pieces.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
Now you can move on to the MD and our trust fund grant.
Okay. Anyway, we still had two, we had the same two people there for that too, so I know. Anyway, the, there was no one that spoke at the pub, public hearing, although it was well publicized. Uh, the bottom line is, is that the county commission has approved the, adopted the resolution and we will be submitting the application by the end of the month, probably on the 28th or 27th. Lauren is back there getting, helping with the, getting the Ts crossed and the Is dotted and getting the final document ready to go. So we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to submit it. I know Keith's been asked a lot of questions. You won't know much of anything until late fall of whether you, you've been funded, so.
Yes.
There's a, yeah. So. I mean, once you submit it, I have a feeling they will, they will send you a whole calendar of everything that's going to happen, so.
Yeah, I know a little bit about the timeline.
Yeah.
I know a little bit about the timeline.
Yeah, so. But I'm sure they will be sending it to you in a more detail, so. Okay, so that's it. That's all I have.
I'm slightly confused in the, with the action left of the public hearing by the board of commissioners, but there's your, your sub on item I here saying resolution of support.
Okay.
Parks and.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to do anything or not. I put it on, I don't know if you want to do a res, I don't guess you need to. You already more or less said you did. Is there anything more we need from the Parks and Rec Commission? They're the ones who have recommended this move forward, so.
No, and the resolution signed by the VOC says with the full support of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Yeah, when I put this out, okay. Nothing needed to be done there. Okay, thank you. Great. All right, I'm done, sir. Thank you.
Moving on to the facilities director.
What were the three items they wanted to know about?
Well.
The toilets.
Uh, the toilets, I've reached out, we are waiting for a um, a certificate of insurance from Cal Excavating. And I emailed him today, so I'll let you know when we have that, and then we just put a date on the books and go as per the contract, I think we said. By April twenty-third.
Yep, I, we've signed the contract, so we're going to work. And the, and the, uh. The pads, the 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 meter has been moved, so.
Yep, that's all, it's all ready for for demolition.
Okay.
Then, uh, I spoke with our maintenance supervisor, and he assured me that we can get those pads built out for, uh. Within our operating budget, so I don't think we need to put anything.
Let me talk about the Miles Kimberly pad.
Okay.
I mean, you'll look on the CIP, there is a project for the porta potties on that side. With a kiosk also, which we also functioned as a trailhead for the loop trail, ultimately. And that pad was supposed to be able to facilitate four units. So in your planning, you might wanna bring a larger pad than you were thinking about.
Well, so the, I'll I'll have to look at that, because the the recommendation that I got is that I had to facilitate two. ADA compliant ones, that way we could do any combination of that, we could have one ADA and two, so.
I know the project that's in the CIP calls for four units at that location.
Okay, well, we will take that under advisement, we'll dig into that a little.
And also an enclosure around.
Uh, we're not, we're not, we're not doing.
Well, yeah, right now, I'd just like to get the pads built for the porta potty, and then uh, when, when the money comes through for the other things, so we'll be able to do that. We'll make, we'll make sure that they're compatible. That handles the pit toilets, I think, unless there's any questions on that. Uh, and then, uh, I I we're on to capital improvement projects and middles. I've put together the ones that you had sent to Lauren, and I I ran those through uh, AI, and I tweaked them a little bit. So they have a lot of detail, and the nice thing about that is, there is a lot of detail, it's not, it's not the hardest, you know. Uh, most sharp and concise numbers, but for our purposes here of planning, it's great. Uh, gives a lot of detail for the planning commission to look at when they're considering the projects, gives a lot of detail for the board of commissioners to look at. And if it does get back to me, if it does get approved, I have a starting place, you know, all these things, it's. You get good information, the more information you put in, so for instance, uh, if I'm a contractor. And I I run, say, a CIP for, uh, I want a new pole barn. Okay, so I can run that with rough dimensions, but if I'm a contractor, I know all the little details to put in there. Which will make it a more accurate estimate. So you do have to do a little bit of follow-up, but it allows us to get a lot of detail that serves our purposes here for planning very well. So I took what you did, uh, I think you had a total of sixteen. And I, uh, I fleshed those out, and then I had uh, three ideas of my own that I submitted. And uh, that's the the PDFs that were out there for review, that's what I intend to submit the next week.
I mean, the base for this was the five-year plan, I took the projects that were in it. And created a CIP for each of those, I then took the conceptual designs for Veronica Valley and for Miles Kimberly Park. And identified any items on those designs which weren't in the five-year master plan. And added a CIP for each of those items, so that's how I came up with a total of sixteen items. Plus there were three or four maintenance type things for mo- for all settlers park. With, I threw in the one for replacing the stairs with a ramp structure. Because I know the condition of the stairs, and I don't know how long they're gonna last, so when they're not usable anymore, we're definitely gonna have to do something, and we should do a ramp.
And all those were structured so that they are in alignment with the general plan, the five-year plan, and some on the recommendation. And I always get this wrong, is it the MM? Yeah, so some of them addressed issues. Yeah, some of those, yeah, yeah. I made sure that they were all in alignment with that, so they should all be cohesive in that sense.
I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at the, the CIPs that were put out on the site.
I have them hard copies to review here, not to pass out, but this is my working. You can make your own.
But I mean, obviously, this is an annual process that we go through. If there's more in there that needs to be in there, or I don't think it hurts us. Hopefully I didn't forget something that should be in there that's not in there.
So what were the three you added?
Uh, the three I I added were, uh, proposed Starlink for each of the parks, which would provide. Uh, connectivity for our computerized maintenance management system, so that that will work out there, so the the maintainers can do that on the fly. Could also provide a public wifi, and then that also allows security cameras to work. Uh, the other one I did was, um. You caught me on the spot here, uh, I I did a a pilot program, uh, I took the idea of Sutton's Bay. Uh, and Leland both put out two successful ice rinks, and I said, uh, well, that might be something to generate more winter activities. And if we do a non-permanent rink, and just kinda get some data from that, see if that's a successful idea. In alignment with the five-year plan to create more winter activities, those don't get addressed very often. I had a line on a place down near Detroit, Rose Isle might be getting rid of their boards for inexpensive or free. I don't know, that's just talk right now, um, but I also specked it out for if we had to buy our own. Uh, then the third project was for a payment, uh, payment scheduling system. Some of that might involve policy change, again, I'm the new kid showing up here, but yeah, yeah, you ask me what I think, this is what I think, I think that. We throw a, we throw a party every summer, you know, and local people come, but a lot more people. Not from here come, and uh, we're kinda left with the cleanup and the bill often, and uh, so the way that I wrote that up is. Is a way that it it phases it in, and it also is balanced so that nonprofits don't pay as much as for profit.
We've, we've had a bunch, a significant amount of discussion in the last couple of months about, okay, with the soccer fields at Miles Kimberly Park. And there's a group that uses those fields every Saturday, pretty much all day. Um, and they take, and they use all the fields, but our policy says first come, first served. So if somebody got here, got there an hour before that group shows up and starts using the soccer field. There's really no recourse to throw them off the field when the other parks, well, it shows up. So I I don't, we, we haven't had these conflicts that I know of, but.
Well, this would address a couple of those issues in that it it creates scheduling, and it also creates, um. You know, they have to have that certificate of insurance, and uh, there's some ideas in there for incorporating that. Into the signup process, but if you don't put up the insurance, you're not on the schedule.
I know, that was the discussion, and I think that Lauren and Patrick here, when the next administrator, or with. James arrives, I think that's one of those topics that they're gonna bring up, and see where they wanna be heading, you know. Especially in the case like you get the soccer fields, all of a sudden, or if you got a baseball field and someone else is there, well, it's first come, first served. Do we need to do something more formal than what we're doing, maybe you don't, I don't know.
And and please too, my my intent is, I hear a lot of discussions, and all I was trying to do with these is capture some of these discussions. Into this format, so that they can really be discussions in the county.
Do, should that be part of our capital improvement projects, or are we not really including that? Uh, just kind of a separate that came with all the other.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just, yeah, that's just the format that I put in there.
If you're in a CIP format.
Well, that's the thing, is like, and from mine, and please correct me if I if I misunderstand, this is, you know, it's a, it's a proposal. You know, and and so it goes through all the, all the filters of our, of our, uh, our government system here. And and again, my intent is like to bring it out as a discussion, if if it's not legal to do based on our our policy and guidelines. That's not my intent, my intent is to create the discussion.
Yeah, it's just probably gonna be a separate topic.
I know, we're having a meeting tomorrow, some of this, I'm gonna list, it it may be a topic that's not in the CIP. But it's gotta be set aside this, you know, for further discussion. There's also some legal stuff that's gonna be looked at, and Jim being in county government. When you start charging fees, you gotta make sure that you're doing it in such a way that. Somehow or another, you're not forcing people that can't afford, you don't want the property to become taxable, that's the thing, you gotta be careful. So how do you do that in such a way that everybody, whether you're a county resident, or you're this, or if you're given too much of a discount. And somebody over here, like in Grand Traverse County, wants to use it, and all of a sudden, they can't use it because they're not. All of a sudden, now you're running into a a shift there, and there's a lawsuit that was filed, this is a long time, sometime ago, twenty years ago. And in one of this cities down around Detroit, that was, that they were charging fees to anyone outside of their jurisdiction to come in there. Well, the court said, great, you are now not, if it's a public park, it has to be open to everybody equally, and if you don't do that. Now you gotta pay taxes.
Well, it's centralized too, and it don't.
Yeah, this is the same, yeah, you gotta be very careful on, so a lot of that's a good discussion.
And if it's making revenue, great, but you know.
But making revenue, paying taxes to everybody is not great.
Right.
I think for the CIP specifically, that 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 item would not go in with the CIP filing. It will be, it will be a point of discussion with the new administrator. And ultimately, the board of commissioners, I think if someone, if we were to charge, charge, try, start charging groups' fees to use the facilities. That's not, this is, yeah, gonna be, there's our decision, it's gonna be at board of commissioners.
Well, precisely, yeah.
So I don't see that going in as as part of the CIP filing that we're gonna do to the planning department.
Okay.
Well, I'm a new kid in the crowd, just like you are too, and I looked at the parks and thought. Um, reading the grant application for Veronica Valley, um, and connecting it to TARD as a. And a box to check and an aid to, uh, make your grant request successful. You uh, take the Miles Kimberly Park into the thirty-three mile radius around that park, you hit Maple City and you hit the Long Lake School. So if there was a way to create a, a trail, that would probably give it enough on the grant applications.
I think that was something in the five-year plan too that was mentioned as well.
Okay, I don't remember seeing it, but yeah, anyway, that's sort of like, I don't know the. Adjacent property owners or the geography or or any of that.
Or the number of driveways a trail would have to cross.
But if you're, if you're gonna do a pay, there are even shoulders there.
No bike lanes.
Yeah, no bike lanes.
Yeah, right, so.
Nice pipe, yeah.
And I know one voice out of. I'm Veronica Valley, at the, our pavilion lost a year, got moved back, and what in its place was an ice rink. And I think.
No, I've submitted Pavilion as well.
But for a year later, I think.
There was, there was one sheet there that that was a scheduling thing, that was a proof of concept thing, and I explained that to Charles, because he he asked me about that too. Um, it was, what I did is I fed all that into to the AI to schedule it and to budget it in a way that would work. That was just a proof of concept to to say, hey, look, this is something that can be done, that's not gonna be submitted as. The proposal or anything like that, um, and I explained that, I explained it to Charles, so.
The copy I have has the ice rink first, and then moves back.
That's, that's a, that is a, essentially, that's nothing, that's just a, an idea for how we can schedule.
Well, let me express my my thought on on the priority on that, in that, uh. And I don't know, the the ice rink may be used in my, in my mind, an ice rink, or a ice rink and a hockey rink. Lends itself more to Miles Kimberly, because that's, that's a, just such a recreational base as opposed to a natural resources.
Right, I I ab- I absolutely agree, the the thought behind that was is take advantage of the, um. The the fact that there was, uh, on both sides, uh, there was enthusiasm for it, and set it up to move. So maybe it's there the first time just to kinda see, hey, is anybody like using this? Then the next year, you move it to Miles Kimberly, which I agree is a better place for it, there's, there's, it's set up better. That was my logic, and it doesn't have to stay that way, you know, I I'm just trying to generate some structure.
All you did, I mean, I could see all the work in there, and it's so nice to have.
Well, what I'm trying to.
I just wanna finish my thought.
Sure.
If the reason is, if I look at all, I mean, our other parks have pavilions, and then if I look at Veronica Valley. The one thing that would increase use on Veronica Valley, more so than the walking trail, all the walking trail. Is if you just had a place that families could be sure they'd be out of the sun, they'd be, they'd be out of the rain. And they could plan for use of that park, I I I could just see use of that park greatly increasing.
I absolutely agree, yeah.
So anyways, I I just, when I read it, that I went by dates when these things were coming, and I used the dates as. A priority for achieving that goal, and that's was my, that's my.
No, and and I apologize for any of the confusion, because that, that. I didn't even want that submitted as, uh, in the CIP package, it just happened to be in that folder when we moved it to the drive. And that's, that's something that, um, Richard said, we're working on, seeing if it's something we can use. To help streamline this, these processes to make it flow more logically, um, but I absolutely. Put that in there, I actually was thinking of you, because I was like, well, I wrote, I wrote. Well, no, I wrote one specifically with the pavilion in in mind, you know, and so I apologize, because that, that wasn't my intent. For it to be saying like, this is just shows how, how we can use technology to schedule and budget. And again, it's, none of this stuff is rigid, it's just a way to say, hey, now we have some structure. We can move the pieces around, we can change the budgets, but we got a place to start, um, and again. There's so many discussions going on, but it's not turned into anything that's actionable.
Well, if we could manually reverse those, I would appreciate, let me go on to Starlink, because I think that is a. Great idea for that little park, because you cannot, I mean, you 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 need a wire and a can to dock anybody. It is, it is totally off the earth.
Yeah.
So it is, I mean, as way out of the box, I've never thought of that, so that that. I don't know what the cost is, or if the county board will go for.
As projects go, it's relatively inexpensive, relatively, I mean.
That'd be pretty cool.
That's a strong word, but.
As far as the ice rink is concerned, we've talked about having an ice rink at. Miles Kimberly Park, and essentially putting the ice rink within the, in the, the, the arena. That's behind the bar.
Okay.
Where the four H group normally does during the, their, their season, but in the winter, nobody's using it, so that's really, you'd actually physically put an ice rink.
And I'm open to all that, I I just think that there's a great opportunity that, uh, you know, for winter sports like that, and if. If, hey, I'm happy to get a ice rink, so if you want it there, I'll put it there.
Actually, my my point is, with the CIP filing that you're gonna make to the planning department. I would prefer to have that item show it as that that Miles Kimberly's on it.
And I understand that, again, all these, there's so many stages to get these through, it's gonna come back down through the board. I'd I'd rather, rather than me make all these subtle changes, bring it down, and when they're actually, because half of these, more than half of these are gonna get cut. Before the board even sees them, so, so.
Prioritized by the planning.
Sure, and I just want to reassure you that all this is is fluid, you know.
I wouldn't, I was just saying, Salado, I'm not gonna get real excited about what comes out of the planning commission, because I haven't seen. At least in my year, what comes out is not how it gets, anything gets budgeted. This, yeah, so. You know, so I wouldn't get too excited what goes into the CIP at this point, I mean, all ideas, but they're all ideas. Now, the next question is, what becomes the priority of this body into the county commission? That's where it all comes down to. At least, that's the pattern that I've seen, so.
I'll hush up, you know, my priorities.
Yeah, I know.
Any other discussion on the CIPs?
The next one was, uh, Veronica.
This is sort of, we just drop these things in, and the planning department will massage through them.
This is sausage.
That there's more information in there now than there's ever been, and there's a lot of stuff that could be moved around. And what I've seen on CIP is what could be on number nineteen. And what I've seen on CIP is what could be on number nineteen, one year could be, come up to number two the next year. It all depends on the priorities, things yet. They haven't done a few CIP plans in my time, you know? It all depends. And then there's some things that get on the list that stay out there in year number six and they stay out there in year number six, and the year number six, they never move.
That's my honeydew list.
Yeah, that's, yeah. It's just, it doesn't, it's a nice, it's an idea.
It's, it's a gestural drawing, you know? And then it comes into focus.
Down to finance. All the dirty word called money.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, there you go.
Okay, Veronica Valley Pond Maintenance, if.
Yeah.
We are on our own and nobody's coming to help us. So, um, uh, we, we talked with Heather Hettinger about a couple of different things. Uh, we, we agreed that, uh, there's gonna be no chemical treatment for it. Uh, basically, our option is to manually cut for, uh, the kids fishing day to make sure that, that they're able to do that. And, um, then the small ecosystem basically runs itself. So in terms of weed removal, we can talk technique, we can talk volunteers. Um, but that's what I mean by nobody's coming to help us. It's, it's whatever we make of it, um, to get that event to, to go off well. And I'd recommend that we take a couple passes at it before we're down to the wire. So two, three weeks before, let's go out and see exactly how much work this is gonna involve with the tools we have, so that, uh, so that that, that great event can happen.
I just advise that we do not do any chemical treatments for this year, so. That's what came out of the discussion in your research. We did review that with the executive committee and they, they said, let's hold off for one year. Now, next year could be a whole different ballgame, but this year we just won't do anything.
The only follow-on discussion that the executive committee we had was for you to investigate if this company that normally does the.
Can't get them to return our calls.
Can do the labor, can do the labor part.
So have we explored barrier methods, the way we're doing that does for weed control? So if you have a certain area where you didn't want weeds to grow, you put a burlap barrier on.
I'm open to all these ideas, send me an email with information, I'd be happy to pursue it.
The weeds that are growing are not necessarily weeds that we don't want.
Yeah, I know.
All the reason we want to get rid of the weeds is for the kids to go fishing, after that, they're fine.
Weed whack them down the day, why not grow back? Probably.
Something like.
We still have a haircut.
Can, uh, can goats get down in there? If you fester on the water's edge?
Can what?
Goats.
Oh, oh, we had, there's women goats.
I think that's the wrong species, I think you need a manatee.
That's moving on, um, I mean, we just, we just did the monkey, we ultimately have one subcommittee. Veronica Valley didn't, didn't nominate or, but didn't elect their chair for this time and it's Keith. Miles Kimberly and Old Settlers didn't have forums for meetings, so we didn't get anything done. Um, anybody have any comments about any of the parks you wanna make at this time?
What I have to bring up is, as far as it could be a maintenance issue or maintenance budget, on the Veronica Valley Bridge, um, if we're gonna turn the pathway into a ADA compliant, one thing I believe we'll have to do is the pad, the footpad on the bridge will have to be widened. Um, I think they also require a handrail and the gaps between the, the boards go along the bridge. I think there's too much of a gap, I think we talked about that before, maybe put a cable in there or something. So if we wanna call the, the area ADA compliant, we'll have to improve the bridge to go along the.
The new trail goes right up to the bridge or that doesn't include that square stuff?
Yeah, the chip path will go right up to the bridge edge on both sides.
Cause I know, we, we do have a CIP project for the bridge accessibility improvements.
Okay.
Is that, is that same thing? What you're saying?
Same thing, and it's, it's, it's right now, it's, you know, anticipated start date of one, one, twenty twenty-eight for the bridge work, so. So if we, we come to do the budget, if it's more critical to do the bridge work, we'll move it up in time.
So do kids ride their bicycles on the trail there and cross the bridge?
It's gonna be a packed stone.
Yeah, it'd be like a driveway.
It's like a driveway, so it should be, you should be able to bike it.
Yeah.
So they thought on bridges and railings, uh, side railings are bicycles, that you might wanna have a solid barrier out the side, because kids cranking and biking across, that was one of the, um, trails for the twenty-first century of the tar trail doing it, you know, cause the pelm can get caught in the and it becomes a hazard. Well, it gets caught between the planks, so there's a
That may be something that.
Whole thing to be worried about, but I don't know what the standards are to.
Yeah, inspector would have to, ADA inspector would have to look at that, give the final recommendation on that.
I drove through Old Settlers before this meeting and there was nothing that really jumped out at me that was critically done. Obviously, I was just seeing if the pit toilet was still there and it still is. I did try to contact a neighbor who was right behind the pit toilets to tell him that it's coming out, but I couldn't get ahold of him. I didn't have good contact information for him. He lives down in Chicago for the rest of the year, so.
Old Settlers, are we getting an update from the one lady that's doing the monkey flower?
She did, our last meeting.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm going here and with, with things, you know, the growing season, what have you, is there any reason for a follow-up for? Cause I think you were, you were mentioning that there's some work that needs to be done around the observatory.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the platform, the viewing platform is really entrusted and hasn't been cleaned for years. So a good high-pressure power wash with water only, no chemicals, would probably be sufficient to clean it off and make it so it's no longer a hazard. That would be, that would be a maintenance item I would throw in there. As I understand, whatever that black stuff is that's all over the deck is actually caterpillar poop from the trees.
I don't remember you mentioning that it needed to be cleaned.
And that's for a future discussion is this tool you bought for scheduling and whatnot for maintenance things? Patrick, that we would get a presentation on how that works and how we can get stuff into it?
It, it's a computerized maintenance management system. It's, it's not necessarily a scheduling system, other than I can set up. It, it allows us to check, to, to track our maintenance, our assets, and I can set up things to be done on a regular schedule. We've only had that since early February, okay? And so it's gonna be a while before we get on our feet. We didn't hire a systems operator, I, I poached one from, um, quality assurance on some pipelines that, that, that I know who is familiar with those systems. Um, and he's pulling double duty, you know? So we are, I keep saying, this is all, this is all guerrilla warfare. You know, we're gonna try to accomplish the most we can, make the biggest impact with our limited resources. And, um, so that is something that I'm sure the board will want an evaluation on once we've had it a year. The scheduling, um, is just, uh, like, like the, the, kind of the, the, the test pilot or the, uh, the proof of concept thing, that probably suits itself more. If I know all the things that you wanna have accomplished, then what I can do is I can set it up on there, I can enter it into and it'll give me a schedule to do that. That's just, that's just using AI, that's using Grok or ChatGPT. And you tell it what, and it helps you with how. Um, but that, that's, you, you can, it's not anything I can really present. I mean, it'd be really boring for me to sit here and type this into the computer and then say, see, look what it did. You know, so I, I was just trying to clarify that a little bit.
I mean, a couple of examples that come to mind is we have the chapel at Old Settlers. It gets that green staining on the siding, which we power wash or wash off every few years. Three, four, five years, I don't know what the schedule goes for. So that's something I would expect to be possibly put in the schedule that says, okay, this year we should go and do the washing of the chapel.
We, we can, we can do our best to do that with the manpower we have. I mean, it, uh, I, I can add it to our worklist.
I mean, so if we're, if we're putting things into your worklist, you're getting, you're able to then calculate manpower needs, labor needs, cost needs to, to do the thing, and then you can say, okay, I need to put these in my budget, especially if you've got a multi-year scheduling.
Right, that's correct. I take those things and I evaluate where the resources need to go.
Patrick?
If I help you.
Yeah.
Um, what is the name of the program?
Limbal is a computerized maintenance management system.
I'm familiar with Maintenance X, Maintenance X, so.
It's, I, I spoke with them, I, uh, I took a broadband, I took it about. Yeah, getting in weeds?
Yes.
Okay, that's the name of it.
Side conversations, you're all more than welcome.
Okay.
Moving on from the individual parks, any public comments at this time? Comment, staff comments filing. Comments or commissioners, Rebecca, anything you wanna say at this point?
No, sorry.
Eve?
Good.
Alan?
May I talk down?
Oh, no way.
Oh, scary breaks, I wonder if you could actually do one? Um, I mean, last year we didn't have it in Sutton's Bay, it was just too warm and they worked so hard to keep flooding it and hoping that it was gonna hold, I don't know how many days we have this year.
This year might have been a good year for it.
Yeah, it might have been a good year.
And you'd have to be good, good snow, snow clearing.
Oh, yeah.
This year was a snow clearing.
Yeah.
Well, the, the place you're talking about over there, it's, uh, uh, an arena, riding arena there. Which is pretty good size.
I think you could fit a, they, and a teenage illegal size.
I guess it was like two hundred, two hundred feet long, so.
And I have no comments and final comments, so I guess we are adjourned.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
And I've got something to do the next two or three days.
Is everybody able to find these on the drive?
What's that?
That's something, I, 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 you say P-drive and I have no idea how I would access this thing.
That's why I said, when I'm saying that. No, I, and I don't send it to P.
Yeah, you have to send it.
No, they do not have that, yeah.
Okay. And that's, that's kind of like, that's a basic sixteen person one, I don't know, seven years.
Yeah.
And you'll see three one.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.